Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the June 7th, 2021 regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I will call the meeting to a quarter. I do apologize, we have been in executive session since five o'clock. It is now 6:34. We are running a little behind. I apologize for everyone's patience or thank you for patience. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. We have. Why don't we actually go back to doing roll calls? Kathy, if you want to start us out with that please.
Kathy Sladey, recording secretary.
Pamela Blair, assistant superintendent for business.
Elizabeth Marcy-Boucher.
Aunt Nella Rochella.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
Greg Tom.
Sarah Trulio.
Bill Fonsica.
I'm the Brown director.
Okay, thank you all. A little more regular routine. I was saying we used to meet in the other room for executive two. I missed that, but maybe someday we'll get back. Okay, we have minutes for approval, please, if I could have a motion.
Move to approve the May 24th, 2021 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Slade. Opportunity for visitors to address the committee. If there is anyone who is on the Zoom meet and would like to speak, that would be your opportunity. At this point, I see no hands raised. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then we will move right along. Thank you. We have committee and subcommittee communication. Beth, would you like to start?
I don't, I'm just happy that the kids were able to graduate. I'm glad they had a nice time. I wasn't able to make it to the graduation. I apologize for that, but I'm happy it went off. I'm happy there was some normalcy going on.
I did attend it and it was, it was really nice. There are the kids and the parents and the kids did a great job with their speeches. So it was nice. Yeah, everyone did a great job.
Same, it was just a treat to be at graduation and I can't speak enough about how it ended even to, to kind of watch the students, the seniors be able to celebrate and toss their caps up and then just automatically start to reach out to their families. There was not even like a procession out and it was just so natural and so celebratory that I think it just kind of spoke to the moment that they were having and allowed for a really nice, really nice, you know, way to end their career here at East Long Metal High School. So it was really one of, I have to say, one of the, probably the top five moments I've ever had like in education was being there and really participating in a different way than I have historically. So I was really grateful for the opportunity, so thank you.
Yeah, and Sarah, I want to thank you for stepping in as I wasn't able to be there either and as the vice chair for stepping in that position.
Bill, continuing along with the same, the ceremony, the graduation ceremony was great. Kudos to all our speakers, especially our own Gordon Smith and Sarah, phenomenal speeches. It came off without a hitch and was very, very good. I also attended the educator Hall of Fame induction at Maple Shade on Thursday and congratulations once again to Elaine Lucci and Wayne Wilson on their induction. The two of them were a force at Maple Shade for many years and moved that school to where it is today. It was, it was a great afternoon and the weather held out just fine. I also have student of the month for the collaborative graduate, grad, graphic and visual design, Josiah Gonzalez, and information support and services and networking one, George McPhail. Congratulations to those two students on a job well done.
Excellent, thank you so very much. Okay, we'll move on to our next order of business. We have presentations, we have the, we're going to present highlights from the East Long Metal High School senior week. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mackey, I'm going to try to share my screen.
Sure.
Okay. So I wanted to share with everyone the highlights from this past senior week. And as people were saying in their comments, it was somewhat of a return to normalcy and it was a, what we can consider not only a great celebration, but just a nice victory over the year of COVID. So they, senior class had a more traditional graduation rehearsal. At that rehearsal, they were actually able to take their photo outside and in most cases maskless, which was fantastic. So that's a nice shot of our entire senior class. They also exchanged yearbooks or picked up their yearbooks, but had a dedication to Mr. Lee, one of our social studies teachers here at the high school and actually an East Long Metal alum. Sad to say that I was his assistant principal, which makes me old. We'll move right along. And during senior week, they had the senior prom and this was a prom that not only was incredibly well planned throughout, it just kept changing and thankfully changing for the better because there was more opening up as we kept our reservation and contract with the log cabin. More things were available to the seniors as we got closer to the prom last week. So they enjoyed the outside and the incredible view and were in their formal attire as they attended the prom, a prom that became a little bit more traditional than originally we thought it was going to be. And then that brought us, at the end of the week, to graduation. And we were out in the stadium. Our students had a chance not only to have their family members there, but as things opened up more, we were able to open up the bleachers. So if people weren't necessarily in their assigned area on the field, the football field, they had the opportunity to view from the bleachers or around the fence that encloses the football field or the turf field, I should say, not just football, a lot of sports playing. Our band had the opportunity to play for the first time. And this doesn't capture our seniors, but they started out with our, with senior members in the band playing their first few songs prior to the procession in. So it was really neat to have our band back together and not only were the students excited, but parents were excited too, just to see this connection. Glad we got here. That's the crowd. Yeah, really impressive.
It was a very good crowd.
It was a good crowd. You see all our seniors seated there and then family members over on the other side and you see spectators up in the bleachers. And then there were spectators that were around the fence, as I had said, one of the, one of the previous slides. The scoreboard was lit up. This is more about the scoreboard than it is about me shaking hands. There was, you know, honoring the class of 2021. And so that was really special. You know, every part of the scoreboard had 20, 21, wherever they could get that up. And it just really was a, overall, as people have said, an incredible night. Glad the weather held out for us. It was a little touch and go as they finished setting it up and then the skies opened up for about an hour to an hour and a half. But kudos to Mr. Page for holding steady and saying, well, we're going to go for it. So that was great. So it was, it was a, an excellent senior week. Happy that it became a little bit more of a traditional senior week for our students and I think everybody enjoyed it. One thing before I move from this, I just wanted to, no slide on this, but I was talking with Ms. Reed, who is not only a senior advisor, but also the key club advisor. And this is just something of note. So three of our key club members, seniors, applied and because of the work, the community service that our key club has done, they were awarded service awards, which comes with a thousand dollar scholarship. And so Raina Leviac, Abigail Haller, and Julia Farantino all received this award, which is really a tribute to them, to our key club. And the interesting thing here is that there are only six awards given in Western Mass and our seniors took three of them. So that was pretty impressive, yeah. So wanted to give a shout out, that didn't happen during senior week, but involved three seniors. So I'm going to stop sharing right now and we can move on to other things.
That's great, some good news and some nice pictures.
Yeah, I looked around just as the ceremony was starting. I couldn't believe how many people were there. Yeah, I really, I haven't seen that many people in quite a long time and I'm sure it was, a lot of it was related to the pandemic and finally getting into something that looked normal and felt normal.
Do you think that they'll continue? Do you think they'll continue in the stadium? I know it's difficult with the turf.
I, I think what it does is it allows for a little bit more of an organized look. And so having the lines and the grid, so to speak, really helped, especially this year. So I think they may do that and it's actually more of the tradition to graduate from the stadium than it is, we've been doing it out on the baseball field. But I think for a long time it was, it was right in the stadium.
Way better drainage.
Yeah, the drainage is far better.
Some of the other schools had it canceled because of the drain.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's better viewpoints from the stadium.
It's nice, yeah, because you have the bleachers too.
Right, but when you do it out on the baseball field, you get people like surrounding everything because they want to get the better views. But it was, you know, there's a lot, like I said, a lot better viewpoints from the stadium.
The only thing I think they have to take into account, which is why we pushed it back to seven anyway this year, is that the turf heats up. So you just have to be aware of that.
Well, thankfully, it happened on Friday night, not Saturday at a line of cloud. That would have been tough.
Okay, good stuff. All right, next order of business, we have the superintendent self-evaluating, self-evaluation for summative review if anybody has received a copy of that.
So basically what, you have a copy of the self-evaluation and the three goals. Most importantly, the biggest goal that I think the entire district and all of you have been rallying around is making sure throughout this year that we have instructional model in place and this comes sort of under our, that first goal, making sure that we're focusing on the whole child. And so whether we were remote, whether we were hybrid, or whether we're full in person as we are now, looking at how do we put the best structure and instructional environment in place throughout the year. That's really what the goal became, while also realizing that we have to have better ways of gauging where our students are socially, emotionally, and in terms of any challenges they maybe have with mental health. And so we've learned a lot this year and that's, those are things that will be brought forth into future years, which I think is exciting. As you go through this, I'll just highlight a couple of things. That was the main goal that we see in terms of our team efforts and that actually involves all of you. There's no way we could have pulled it off without the support of the school committee. And also sort of staying steadfast, making a decision in August and despite certain entities coming in and putting pressure, holding to that original decision. So I thank you for all of that. The second and third goal really have to do with continuing to make sure that the school department is creating strong partnerships with other departments across the town. This year, obviously, we had a very unique year with how much we worked with the town health department. I can't say enough about the folks in our town health department and certainly the director, Amy Petrowski, and the entire board, really, very supportive of what we're doing here and what we've done throughout the year in terms of all of our, our planning and how we work through just when we get positive cases. They've always been involved. Our nurses have been involved all year. They've been exceptional and our administrators have been involved and that can happen, as we know, any day of the week. So we could, our nurses could be calling and working on contact tracing on a Sunday afternoon or late, unfortunately, on say a Wednesday evening. But everybody joined together and I think really accomplished some, some pretty incredible things in supporting families and that's, that's the key of what we're trying to do. And we had a very successful vaccination clinic for people 12 and up at Burchland's and we're hoping that was on May 26th and we're hoping to finalize that on June 17th. Anyone who got their first shot back in May, June 17th, will have that vaccination clinic going again. So that was really successful. And then the, the last goal really was all about making sure that East Long Metal Public Schools moves through that eligibility period successfully. And I'm really happy to say that not only have we moved through successfully, we had a great first orientation meeting for our building committee.
I know. That's great.
And that, that was really well done. We had one of our past owner project managers, John Lemieux from Vertex, who was, Vertex was our owner project manager for the Meadow Brook Windows and Doors project. And he volunteered to just give us some highlights as to what a building committee is going to have to do once they get up and running. And it's a, it's a long commitment. It's anywhere from five to seven years. And he gave us some ideas of how working with the MSBA will happen when you're in the core program versus the accelerated repair program, which we've been in the last few years. So I'm really happy to say that not only do we have that meeting, but we're scheduled to be on the Mass School Building Authority's board meeting for June 23rd.
Do you know what that's going to be?
It's going to be online.
It is.
It, it really is a few and you will get a chance because, as I said, this is a long commitment, roughly five to seven years. When we have the chance to get back to a board meeting, it's, it is, it's quite the experience.
Yes, it is.
Got to go into Boston and really live that experience because. Yeah, truly, I've had lunch.
Lunch in Boston.
The board, the board meeting is, is a real.
It's quite the experience.
That's putting it very well placed.
Kiss the ring?
Yes.
Basically kiss the ring.
But, but you, when we're there, it's for good, good reason.
It is for good things.
It's just fun to watch.
Because everybody's trying to outdo everybody else. It's a competitive.
Yeah, well, we're all after the same fund.
Yep.
I'm not sure what that, I'm not sure what that looks like in a virtual meeting, but we'll see. So we're, so I'm, I'm really happy to say that we've moved through with all of your support, with the town council's support in terms of appropriating the money. So at that meeting is where they would vote to award the town and send a funding agreement for the feasibility study because the 1.2 million that has been appropriated and voted on is what we're estimating to be the total amount. The Mass School Building Authority will enter into an agreement, as they've done in the accelerated repair projects, to pay up to 56% of eligible cost of that study. So similarly to what we've experienced with accelerated repair projects, as we pay, Mass School Building Authority also pays and starts to reimburse the town. I think Mrs. Blair can actually explain that part better because she manages the pro pay that.
Well, years ago, years ago, you, you didn't get your reimbursement until the project was completed and then it was audit done. So it literally could be years before you get that reimbursement. Now it's a progress payment. So we work with our OPM and, and it's submitted as, as we pay invoices, then it's submitted to the MSBA and those funds come to the town and to the account.
Because I remember when Burchland came on board, that's how it was.
Yes.
Where they didn't pay until.
Because Burchland's now 21, I think, right?
And the payments just stopped on that, just never.
Exactly.
So if people have questions regarding anything in here, please don't hesitate not only to ask now if you would like to, or you can read individually, whatever works for you. What I'll do is, as I've done in the past, I'll put together four folders regarding the four standards and just put evidence in there and shared so everybody can see that. Be a little substantive evaluation folder for all of you.
Doesn't have to be that thick.
No.
Thinner.
Not like the first one.
So anyway, thank you. That's the biggest piece that I want to say, because without all of your support, most of this wouldn't have happened.
Yeah.
Say the least.
Yes. Okay, any questions or concerns? Thank you very much. We will move on to the FY 20 end of year financial audit.
That's right. So in your packets, well, first of all, I had given you a copy of the end of year report so you all could see all the detail that goes into that. I don't know where I'm supposed to be looking here, right? So every year I give the school committee their, the, a copy of the end of year report and it's a very, very detailed report on all of the revenue sources for the school department, as well as all of the expenditures for the school department. So that would include any type of revolving account, any type of grant, the, the school operating budget that we get from the town, as well as any town expenditures up and beyond the operating budget that, that the school department has. And that goes broken out by each and every school and some things are district wide. And it's, it's about a half an inch wide and it takes me about the month of September to do, along with every other business manager across the state of Massachusetts. So once that report goes in, it's very important because that determines the chapter 70 funding, which is what the town gets to, for the schools, as well as per pupil expenditures, the per pupil amount for each district, average teacher payrolls or average teacher salary amounts. There's a lot of information in there. Then about six months later, an outside auditing firm needs to come in and do an audit. So that's what this report is and I'm very, very happy to say that there were only five findings, three of which were small errors that I made on putting grant amounts in the wrong place, in the wrong column. Two of these were items that were out of our control because it was the chart of account. DESI made a new chart of account decision to, they, they want our chart of accounts to be broken out in even more detail. I'm hoping that this is going to go away and not even become something that all business managers have to do because it would be an extreme amount of work. So again, there's five findings here, three of which were small errors that I did. And you will see at the bottom of, of each of those findings that it says the school department has submitted an amendment with the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed on May 21st, 2021, to correct the above finding. So I just need to bring that to your attention and have you vote on that.
Any questions from the committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know, thanks Pam.
I know that's where you run to when you're running away from our meetings when we're all done to, to work on this.
Exactly.
So thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to accept the audit report.
All right, I'm going to accept the audit report of the end of the net count reporting ending June 30th, 2020 as presented.
For FY 20.
For FY 2021.
Well, it's, it's FY 20, so it ended June 30th. We're always a year behind.
Okay, the year ending June 30th.
That's correct.
Motion made by Beth.
I'll second.
Second by Bill, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, next FY 22 budget update.
Share my screen again, Mr. Mackey. Okay. So as I'm sure all of you, I know, I know all of you know that last week when the budget was adopted by the town, the, our budget request, which was a level services request of roughly 2.78% of, of an increase, was reduced by about 404,000 to about a 1.5% increase. It's still an increase. Unfortunately though, it won't, it will not cover level services. So it's not something that will sustain all programming moving forward for next year. And so we have been. There we go. We've been looking at how we meet that reduction. And as you know, and we've done throughout at least my tenure and I'm sure well before I became superintendent, we're always going to work with the town and make sure that not only are we being fiscally responsible, but we know that our main charge is to make sure that we're supporting our students and we're continuing to make progress to allow our students to grow and everybody within ELPS to grow. And it's a tricky balance sometimes. Just to give you an idea, over the last 10 years, we're averaging, as you see from 2013 to 2022, we're, we're averaging about 2.2% of an increase. It was of particular note, just so that you know, and this is just in, during my tenure, anytime we increase by below 2%, so you see 2015, fiscal year 2015, the discussions happened in the spring of 2014, we had to eliminate four positions because there was a, an increase to our budget that year of 1%. And then you fast forward to 2021, last year we worked and had a number of meetings with the town financial oversight committee to reduce our budget request that has been submitted the last few years in March, from, at that point, I think it was closer to a 3% or more of an increase and we reduced it by over $900,000 because everyone was concerned with the potential fiscal challenges that might come with COVID. And so we were at the table and working toward a solution with the town. And, and we eliminated five positions, five positions that weren't with us in this school year and won't be with us in next school year because we had submitted as requested a level services budget. This year, as they voted the budget in place, we're at about a 1.5% increase. And so that's about $404,000 that we have to make up. Some of what I just said is on that screen, which is quite packed now as I look at that. So I apologize for all the verbiage, but the highlights basically are that last year we did work with the town and certainly that, that was our responsibility. Everybody who was part of the town government and part of the municipal side of working through a budget knew that there could be fiscal challenges and so we reduced five positions. The second high school assistant principal was not filled this year and will not be filled next year. The instructional technology specialist that really helped us move into a one-to-one program, that was a position that we did not fill this year and will not be filled next year. We eliminated one foreign language position at the middle school. So again, not filled this year, won't be filled next year. We also eliminated a literacy support teacher at the middle school. These are positions, not people. And then we also eliminated the position of the shared academic literacy coach. So those are five positions that as we started to develop our budget for this year, projecting into next year, we knew we were going to be without because the guidance was level services. So that's, so right now we're looking at making up about 404,000, as I've said. Just to give you an idea where we stand, as you saw this in our budget hearing, if you just look at LPVC districts in terms of per pupil expenditure, we're now closer to the bottom of the seven districts than the top where we, we actually used to be for quite a few years during my tenure. So that's a little bit concerning because obviously it does take a village to keep moving our students and give them opportunities to grow. So what we've been doing as we're working through this and planning is we're looking at where in our budget we can reduce spending and hopefully start to make up some of that 404,000 deficit or reduction that came through. or reduction that came through last week's vote. But we do know when you're dealing with a significant number such as four hundred and four thousand, that it's going to eventually hit positions. Because any school department generally eighty percent of their budget, close to eighty percent, is personnel. This, we're a people industry and we're a service industry. And that's bringing many people together whose skillsets are incredible to try to structure the learning environment for our students. So we have been discussing and looking at areas where we possibly could reduce positions. And so some of those areas, very specifically, are central office. Certainly it's, this is not something, anything that we can do to minimize the impact on classroom instruction, we want to do. And so central office is an area we're going to look at. Social emotional programming is something that we have to look at. It's something that we just started to expand into. And we know it's something that we need coming out of the year where the pandemic basically changed operations for everything we do. So there are positions right now around that we were hoping to expand that we will not be able to fill. And when we look at social emotional, we're talking about teachers who not only have gone through a lot of the preparation that all of us have gone through, but then they've gone on and they've taken workshops in how to connect with students and set a classroom environment that's conducive to supporting students who may be struggling with certain things. And, and some of the things that our program at the middle school and our program at the high school are dealing with is they're working with students on how to regulate some of their emotions so that you're not seeing behavior challenges and so forth as students go through and they become frustrated for whatever reason. So we were hoping to continue to strengthen that across all grade levels. But this may be something that we'll have to look at different ways of supporting at the elementary level, more around, I guess, training existing staff without necessarily having the, the expert, if you will, in the position. Right. Other areas is classroom instructional support. We have to look at those positions really. None of these, none of this that we're talking about is good in terms of having our programs move forward. The gifted and talented program, that's something that as we are looking to impact the fewest number of students, that's something that we would have to look at and discuss and, and see is that something we can continue as we go forward. And then, as all of you know, there are other areas that we may have to look at and review for possible reduction of positions. And I want to emphasize that, that we're looking at positions and certainly not looking at people. Unfortunately, when you start eliminating positions, it does impact people and it impacts their lives. And probably most importantly, it impacts the students and the families they connect with on a daily basis.
I want to go back to talking about high school and senior week and stuff.
Senior week, because this is, this is, yeah, unfortunately not the, the presentation that is as uplifting as the other one.
Right. Well, unfortunately, it's the second year in a row we've had to do this. First, you know, last year we understood because nobody knew what was going to happen. This year, unfortunately, this came out of left field when we were asked for a level services, reduce the level services, everything was jogging right along. And then all of a sudden, thirteenth hour, this thing comes out of nowhere. So it's kind of disappointing, to say the least.
Yes.
It is going to impact across the district and, you know, it's going to be felt. It's too bad. We should be moving forward, not backwards, and I'm afraid we're not moving forward anymore.
As a point of information, do you think you can, that first bullet that's on the slide right now?
Sure.
Reads, "There are no good budget reductions when the starting point is level services." Is that something you can just, in terms of anyone watching or who's going to view the chapter? Like just explain because that's important.
Yeah. So the budget request that we had submitted basically looks at what programs are in place this year and working. And when you go level services, you're looking to move people and the programs into the next year. And so then what is the cost or the percentage increase to make that happen? And generally what you're talking about there is contractual obligations, that there is a cost of living adjustment for all of our staff as we move forward into any given year. And so to bring, I mean, I think what people also should know is that we have over four hundred and ten people working in the Islam public schools. And then if you add substitutes on a, a little bit more of a regular year than a COVID operations year, you know, you're looking at possibly introducing another eighty individuals who sub at different times during the year. And so it's, it's a pretty large organization. And so you're going to have some type of increase when you have five bargaining units and there are cost of living adjustments and so forth. And so level services is simply that. You're bringing all your programming and staff forward into the new year. You're not necessarily growing and say, moving on different positions that we might request in other budget years. I mean, one of the things that I know that all of our principals were looking to try to achieve in this budget was to bring back those five positions that had helped us move forward in previous years. Now, unfortunately, we're in a situation where if level services gets reduced, which in this case it has, you're now looking at something that was going on this year will not be able to go on next year. So that's, that's, I guess, about as simply as I can put it.
I think that's terrific. I think it's just important for, for folks to understand what level services is. And then when we aren't able to achieve that, the types of impacts it will have at each one of the buildings across the district and how it, it pushes everyone's hand to make really, really tough decisions so that we're able to continue providing educational services, but maybe not the ones that we would be envisioning if, if things had gone differently in terms of the budget process.
Well, I think it all, it spreads everyone else so thin that they're kind of just treading water.
In the morale part.
Yeah.
They're processing children. That's what happens. Kids get processed. Let's spit. And it isn't, there's nothing enriching. It's all enriching because we're enriching them. But it makes it harder to add additional. Is extremely intelligent in terms of dollars and cents of the town. They want to make sure that we are physically sound. I respect that. That said, I know one member on that board was very pro us. Another member was an educator, which I was a little confused with. And I understand what their job is. But unless you walk through the schools and really understand what it is to educate a child. And today, you go back to nineteen seventy-three, half of the town's budget was for education. In the nineties, half of the town budget, it's on, I went, I looked it up. Half of the town's budget was education. And back in seventy-four, when I was looking this up, they had a brand new high school, right? So there was that cost on top of it. Half of the town's funding is for their education and nobody wants to say that. But we are doing far more. And I understand the DPW does some things and the IT does some things. But there wasn't IT back in the seventies. We need the help of the town to move our programs forward. And unless you understand what the state is demanding of us, especially under this past year, this is where our frustration was, when the town council couldn't come to our emergency meeting to help us understand where they were coming from. We are not making money cuts in this town. We are not adding to the taxes of our, of our people in this town. And, and this is where you can sit there and be a smart with numbers as anybody out there. But to sit there and to have venom toward our schools because they're such a burden on this town is really disappointing. I wasn't going to say that, but I did because that is how I feel. And the people and the parents of our district need to understand that. They need to not be afraid to have their voices heard. And you would direct this to the town council, who would be happy to hear from you, I'm sure. Thank you.
I just wanted, um, what, one, one, one I wanted to just mention. It, so as you saw in my self-assessment, our partnerships with other town departments are phenomenal. You know, getting through any capital project without Bruce Fenny and Joe Dunn would be far more difficult. And, and we have a very good partnership that actually is in writing with the Department of Public Works. And, and I think it's reciprocal. You know, where we can help, we do. And certainly their expertise on a number of things has been incredible. And then the same goes with the IT department. You know, we work throughout any given school year. And then certainly in the summer, as we're planning many different things, really shoulder to shoulder, not in COVID. So that's figurative. But, uh, you know, we work to make sure that we're moving students forward and putting the best possible technology that we can to help classrooms, teachers and students grow and accomplish the great things that they've been accomplishing.
I don't know if you were done, but you could start again.
Okay.
Sorry.
I was just going to say.
It's a long time to look at that same screen.
Sure. No, it makes sense. Sorry, Mr. Mackey. Sometimes I get, I get long-winded.
The health department too, I would say.
The health department, really, there's no department in town, at least that I think, that we do not have a good relationship with. Certainly we plan with REC, we schedule the fields with them and work through any number of challenging situations that could arise during a given year. So I, I just wanted, you know, people to know, and I don't think you, I think you were saying, correct.
People of the town are generous. It is without doubt, they are here for us. They know they are.
Right. And so there's, there's a lot of, certainly, we understand the planning and the partnerships that go on. You know, there, there is a certain amount utilities. DPW pays the utilities. And that was an agreement prior to my tenure as superintendent. And so those utility line items went over to the DPW's budget. So certainly, yes, that, that impacts us and.
But a lot more is expected from us too.
I, I just wanted to, yeah, I, and I agree. Because I know that you weren't, you weren't talking about the partnerships.
No, I think just in general, I think that we work well with the entire town. And I think, and I, and I, and I'm not, I don't want to badmouth the town council. I understand they have a job to do. Financial oversight has a job to do. It's just, this wasn't the year to play games with us.
Well, and I think it's a process thing. And I know I've been vocal about this and I, you know, I won't reiterate what I've said before necessarily. But going forward, the process needs to be better.
Transparent.
Transparent, cooperative.
Since the charter, it's been difficult.
Well, and, and problem, yeah, and I think there's a, there's a, there's a push and a pull versus selectmen, board of selectmen, town council responsibilities. We had appropriations originally, financial oversight committee. We need to lay out a process that we can all agree on. Currently, the financial oversight committee is not laid out in the charter. And it's, I believe it's the responsibility of the council to know the budget. And so if they decide to have a financial oversight committee, which is their purview to do, then I would say that it would there be their responsibility to know what goes on in those meetings because that's what they're voting on. So they're either watching all the meetings or three of them are attending all of them anyway. So why doesn't the council do the whole budget process anyway? I don't understand that because they answer directly to the voters. And as we saw, you know, their priorities were a level service, level services budget. But maybe it really wasn't because they were certainly willing to not provide level services for the schools, yet add positions to other departments in town. So it wasn't even necessarily a money thing, but it was a priorities thing. So all I'm looking for is in the future that we lay out priorities collectively. Town manager has a lot to say on the issue. We have a lot to say on the school department issues. Town council certainly had a best, has a vested interest in it. They have their priorities. They have their job to do, and I respect that. But we need to work better at it because we tried, as you said, several times to invite them to our meetings. We would offer ourselves to their meetings. And in fact, the vice chair and myself had to basically force our way into their meeting by speaking for allotted three minutes about the budget. So bygones be bygones. Last year was last year. We have to deal with this. We're going to look at reducing positions tonight. It's an uncomfortable thing that we need to do, but it's in direct correlation to decisions made by the town council in their process. So I would just ask next year that we just look at the process. And I challenge the counselors to, to dive into the budget themselves and to list out their priorities and speak on camera about them instead of just the bottom line number. And it just kind of gets, goes on the wayside. I know they all have good intentions. I, I completely agree with that. But they need to state those intentions early on and not pass them on to a, a subcommittee or, or maybe not. And so why is it that the subcommittee gets to decide on the priorities of a town? They're not elected by anybody. So it really should be the council, I believe. And again, they can do it however they want, but I want the voters to be aware and the townspeople that this is the process. And potentially, we may not even get a chance to see the finance oversight committee next year if it's not an LCAP. So I worry about that a little bit too because we're certainly discuss things openly and honestly on our meetings. We were asked for a level services budget. We provided that. If something changes, then let's work collectively to, to work through that. I don't think the financial picture necessarily changed. I think the priorities of the council changed and they passed that along through the finance oversight committee, which they appoint and which is themselves. So it's kind of a backward process. In fact, two of them, the counselors can vote twice, once on the financial oversight committee and again on the council. So I, you know, I, it's, it's, it's not an ideal process. They can do it how they want, but I'm just explaining what the process was and why I don't think it worked well this year. Because as, as, as you said, Bill, it was a last minute decision. We met with them. There was never talk about what would a four hundred and four thousand dollar reduction? How would that impact the schools? Never was discussed. And as I said, other positions were added to the town manager's department and the town finance department, two new positions. So it wasn't all about money. So we need the council to be responsible for their decisions. But that means they need to share their priorities openly and talk about the budget in their meetings and not behind doors with a potential future oversight committee. And the two percent that they talked about this year in terms of increased to the, the burden on the tax base is an arbitrary number because we will not get two percent next year. And I just want to state that publicly because we can say that it, it was, it had, it was a reason for it. But you can come up with reasons after the process anyway. But this, this was not the reason. They just wanted to cut it. So if you want to cut the school department budget, I said, I asked the council next year, say it at that meeting with the town manager. Tell the town manager, challenge her to, to come up with those cuts. Challenge us to come up with that budget, not later on in the process, chop it all up and decide to just vote on it. So again, they have good intentions. I know that and I believe that we have good intentions. None of us are in this for the money. We're all in it for the town. That's clear, right? So anyway, I said my piece on that. We will continue to move forward with the council. You know, I, I, I'm sure they're looking for new leadership from the school committee. So the next chair will, will, will have a fresh start, I'm hoping, with them so that the process can move a little forward because I think I ruffled a few feathers this year. So I look forward to that.
Well, I would add to, right, that, you know, to mention that, you know, positions being cut was a scare tactic by the school committee. And it's not a scare, scare tactic. It's a reality. And, you know, Gordon put a couple of slides up there that speak to that. We are now going from relatively holding steady at third in the LPV EC to dropping to fifth. And that's a reality. Like we are now funding our schools the fifth highest in the LPV EC.
And that's not something to be proud of.
No, that's data.
If you're looking at numbers, you're like, ah, it's great, but it's not.
It's not. When you look at how schools are funded and how students achieve, there is data and evidence that speaks to schools that are funded at a higher level. Students perform at a higher level. That is, inextricably, there is a link there. So if we're seeing ourselves now holding steady at third, now dropping to fifth, that's reality. That's the reality that we're now living in. And that's something that people need to recognize and, and understand that how, how funds are, are channeled towards schools has an impact on how students historically achieve. That's part of the work. And then I think the other piece that has been, you know, floated out there and not even floated, it's been stated out there openly, is that there is a link to our enrollment. And if that's the case, then you need to look at the slide that Gordon also put up there that shows our budget. If our budget was really linked to enrollment, that slide would look very different. Like that is another piece of data. And if we're going to speak frankly about school budgets. And if we're going to speak frankly about school budgets, and we're going to speak frankly about a school budget and how it fits inside of a town's budget, then those are two slides that we need to sit up and take notice about. Because that's not providing good information to the general public. It's just not. And we need to be able to advocate for that as members of an elected board, being the school committee, but also as members of the community at large. We need to know and be aware and help be the voice that allows for this to be transparent, because right now it doesn't feel that way. And unfortunately, there are going to have to be tough decisions that now impact kids and impact schools. And it's unfortunate coming on the heels of five positions last year.
And there's a direct correlation between the quality of schools and the tax dollars that you can't get from, from your people in the town. I would think of the neighboring town that had some of the most fantastic programs. They started cutting and cutting and cutting, but they can't even maintain practically a high school at this point. And, and because people left town, because they are sending their students, you know, families are sending their students out of town for education elsewhere. And if, if we start cutting back on these things, then our numbers will go down. And then our programs will get cut. And then there'll be less for our kids. And then our, no one's going to want to move to town. We're not going to be selling hundreds of homes a year. There are people going to be sitting on them. And it's, it all correlates. It's, a healthy school is, is a, is a healthy place. And you build a new building for school, you increase, you bond for school, a couple of years ago, a 6% increase in, in the tax base in your town, just by bonding for school. I know the school's expensive, but you know, you can't be upset about capital projects also, because those capital projects maintain buildings that are the town's buildings. I mean, it's, it's not just the school's buildings. It's the town's buildings. And, and, you know, you've got to maintain it all. And I understand, we don't want to be at that $25 cap ever, and we shouldn't be. They do a good job keeping things the way they do, but this was a little, I just think it was a little excessive.
And it wasn't all about the money, because they added positions to the town side. So it wasn't all about the money. So I, we will move forward and we will, we will, we will heal as a town and we will do better next year and we'll all work collectively. I know that. And we'll work with the Town Council, who are good people. And we know them personally and are thankful for the, the work and time they put into this town. So we can always do better and do well next year. So in that regard, we have to talk about now what the effects of $400 and $4,000 reduction from level services will look like next year. So as we talked about it, it will include a reduction in staff, full-time employment.
Wait, so the positions that we lost last year, they're definitely not coming back. Those are gone. And now we need to, and now we need to add more to that. So I think that point that Gordon had up there was that there's no good budget reductions. The starting point is level services. So our level services is now absent those five positions, because they're no longer part of our budget. And now, moving forward, will be absent six positions. So anytime we move forward now, it's absent those 11 positions. That's our starting point. That's our ground zero.
Plus the two social emotional's that we've had on our dotted for a few years now, but we haven't yet. So you add those to them. We will have 13.
I mean, we expect our school leaders to be successful in these buildings. And, I mean, the high school alone, and some of them are, they're new, they're new, yeah, they're new administrators. And you couple that, again, with the general sense that funds should be funneling into schools right now. Like, our state and our federal government are recognizing the fact that schools need money to do business that they usually did it because of the results of the past 450 days. And we're now in a position to not do that. And I just think that that continues to, to have to drain, drain people, like you're saying. It's pulling on individuals at this point, because they're trying to do what's best for kids.
Yep.
But with less personnel.
Resources.
And less resources. Which leaves us in a tough spot.
Yeah. Okay, so how are we going to do this? What are we thinking? We, we had discussed. So you do have positions that at the end of the year will be open. They will have an impact. Now, as you look at Central Office, as we transitioned to the Collaborative for Transportation, we no longer employed 18 drivers and no longer owned a fleet of roughly 20, 21 buses. However, we did keep, and I think it was, I would do this again and I would recommend it again. We kept a transportation coordinator who did all the routing and did all the customer service for our families. And I think that not only helped the transition, but it helped in a number of different ways in terms of how we go about plotting the routes for summer school or extended school year and special education. Just what we do in terms of customer service for our families, you know, I think there was a benefit to that. Unfortunately, that will be a position that even though the person who currently holds the position has resigned for the end of the year, it's not, it's one I would like to fill, but we can't. There's no. If, if we're going to look to avoid impact to classrooms, then obviously Central Office has to be part of that solution. So that really is going to fall on many of the people in this room, excluding the High School Committee members, although I think you'll get calls, in terms of customer service for transportation. So.
And we actually worked with the Town Council to reduce 18 full-time employees by switching our transportation, because they had asked us and we worked very closely with them on that.
Sure.
I think that's a point to reiterate, Gordon. Like, customer service means families. Like, those are our customers. So thinking about that. So that is an impact that might not necessarily be felt by children or by students, but individuals who reach out to possibly have questions answered about how their child goes back and forth to school, they might not get the same type of responses and the same types of, you know, quickness in terms of that, because it is going to be shared amongst other individuals. So, you know, that's still somebody's child who's on a bus, who might need an answer, might not get it as immediately as they got it before.
Well put.
I mean, I, I think it's important, though, to recognize, like, even if it's not impacting a kid, it's impacting a family. And like, we need to be honest about what these cuts are going to do.
I think transportation is one of your more emotional
Of course.
Or emotionally charged areas. Transportation and maybe athletics are two very charged areas within a school system. And so, yeah, it's, when a bus doesn't show, or a bus misses a student, or there's an incident with a bus to or going from school, that has an impact on any student riding that bus and the families, the families of the students on that bus.
Your heart drops when you're waiting to see what's the Bloom's announcement going to be. Like, is it, was there an accident? Was something delayed? Like, you're waiting with bated breath to see why your child is maybe not at your doorstep when you're expecting them. And it's also a line item that families contribute to. Many families in this town pay for busing. So to now think about families who are contributing funds to ensure that their child can receive transportation might now not get the type of customer service they were used to, even though they're still paying for it. So I just think it all
Yeah.
Needs to be out on the table if we're talking about this.
Sure. So, I mean, so obviously that's one area. What we tried to do as we looked at different areas is, again, it was a focus on the least impact to instruction of students. There's no, and I was true, though, I said it a number of times, there's no good budget reduction. You know, we were working incredibly well, and I think we had a number of successes this year in a very challenging year. And that's where we began the year down five positions. A position that we have not filled at this point, given the year we've had, would be the social emotional teacher at Meadowbrook. And so that's a position, obviously, I would wait to fill if, if ever, depending on what our budget looks like in coming years. But again, we'll have to figure out ways to work around that, if you will, and support students in other ways. But then it gets harder after you, you go through those, those two areas.
Yeah, especially coming back from a pandemic and we don't have the SCL position. And especially given our district goals. We're charged as a district with supporting the whole child. That right there speaks in direct contradiction to what our goals are. Again, no good decisions right now.
So as we keep moving.
So as we keep moving, I think, you know, one of the things that we've been looking at is, is the support to the classrooms. And this comes in a variety of ways. It comes through paraprofessionals. It comes through some of the professional development support, academic coaching and so forth. And so we have to make some challenging decisions around positions there. Also, we have a Gifted and Talented Program that I think is exceptional. It spans K through grade five. And we do have an individual who's retiring there. Do you sort of tighten the belt, if you will? You know, one of the greatest features about our Gifted and Talented Program is that it's got a feature K through five, where we have some incredibly talented teachers who are pushing in. So they touch all students with their push-in and enrichment of, excuse me, the curriculum that the classroom teachers are teaching. Then, as we get into grades four and five, we add also a pull-out program, where you're going through an identification process and specific students are pulled out for some additional programming in the fourth and fifth grade. If we were to sort of tighten that up, you would not fill that position. That's a retirement position, and we'd have to share a gifted and talented teacher across two buildings. Which would probably.
I just don't think we'll ever get that one. And I think that that's a shame. I think it's a shame that a program that we have been looked at so highly for from other school districts have come to see our program, and we have to even consider that.
Right. And, and we would have to look at how the pull-out part of fourth and fifth grade works, because you really can't ask one individual to go across two schools and do the same, same type of program. And so that might become an after-school type of program, as opposed to.
And for me, it's frustrating, because as much as I love the push-in, the pull-out's important, because we're always there for those kids that are struggling. We're there for those kids that are struggling, because our job is to get them where they need to be. But it's those kids that are at that level that they need something extra, because they're not getting that extra in a classroom. They're, they're doing what they have to do. Their grades are good. They're, you know what I mean? And, and so this is something that they get. And, you know, because we have to make sure kids are up to grade level, that's a priority. But this has always been something a little extra special.
And again, you go back to our goals as a district. You go back to the creation of things like the Diversity and Equity Committee. And again, not providing experiences for all students, whether they need support or whether they need enrichment, is in direct contradiction to what we're trying to do.
Right.
So we're trying to find ways where we're minimizing impact, especially when it comes to core academic standards or core classroom experiences. But that does not mean that any of these are going to put us in a place to move the work of the district forward. We're not even at status quo anymore. We're operating below status quo. And we're actually looking at cuts that are going to put us in a place to not reach the goals that we've set forth as a committee and that the superintendent has set forth for the district and the administrators he's charged with.
So if not the gifted and talented teacher, what, what are some other options for discussion?
So you have, obviously, you have academic coaches that are part of our classroom support. And they've been incredibly vital in terms of moving literacy and math instruction forward, something that I have spent, as have our administrators, most of my 11 years here in East Long Meadow as superintendent, to try to build that program. And last year, we started to dismantle it with a literacy position academic coach that was shared between Maple Shade and Mountain View. You know, I hesitate to, to offer that, but that's something that you certainly can look at or we can look at. And then you have positions that, across the district, where you may have resignations and retirements. But as we start to look at these, you know, there's impact. There's impact of all the ones we've already discussed, and there's impact. You know, enrollment gets discussed. And true, we've sort of flatlined it, in some cases declined over the last 10 years. However, I do think we will see, especially at our youngest grades, a big return next year. We lost a lot of students, possibly, who would have been with us in kindergarten to homeschooling or to other programs that opened up immediately, either in a hybrid type model or full in-person. So I think we're going to see, given the births that happened five years ago, if we use that just as one measure, we could have a very big kindergarten class this coming school year. We're, we're at around 150 right now. We generally pick up students all the way through the summer. So, you know, it could be, usually we, we're, we've been in somewhere in the 160s, years where we get closer to 180 or above. The year that we had about 191. Going into August, we actually hired another kindergarten teacher. So Meadowbrook has been balancing, where usually they have eight sections, K1 and 2. They have that ninth section, which is covered where that larger class is. Excuse me.
To kind of bounce up along with the bubble.
Right. So, you know, that's, I hesitate to, at our youngest grade levels, to look at positions that may open up for retirement. They are, they are there. But then you're talking about possible, you know, you don't know who's coming in for kindergarten, who's returning in those other grade levels. You know, that's a gamble.
So just to recap, we talked about the transportation coordinator. Spoken about the social emotional position at Meadowbrook. We've identified now three paraprofessional positions. One at the high school, one on Meadowbrook, and one in Mountain View. And I guess the discussion would be around the gifted and talented teacher.
So that's a position.
Position.
Yeah.
Or a coaching position would have to round out those six.
Or you open it up to other areas in terms of looking at other resignations and retirements.
Well, so that bubble teacher, I think you, you've made the case that it's, it has value and it's been working, and that will help us keep class sizes down, which is super important in an elementary level, because we can, we can move that one position. So, I mean, I think that has value and merit, and the numbers show that the bubble will be coming again. The second grade teacher, again, would cause the same kind of issue, because then we'd be down, again, raising class sizes by 15% or so.
Right.
So, I don't know. I think personally, I would, I would lean towards either the gifted and talented position or the, or the coaching position potentially at one of the elementary schools as the sixth. But is there thoughts from the committee?
I think, I mean, I'd like, let's just kind of sit and think about it and look at what the impact's going to be in based on those different things. I, you know, from my standpoint, I feel like we will get a coach back. We probably will never reinstate things with gifted and talented. We'll just leave it at their bones. I don't know. I, I think that it just needs to maybe take some time.
Well, part of the issue is, though, if there are employees involved, we would have to let them know soon if they will be removed. Next week, 15?
Generally, we shoot for June 15. The contract may actually say by the end of the school year, whenever that may be. But I think June 15 is somewhat of a. I think June fifteenth is somewhat of a a calendar mark that everybody goes by.
I'd like to see the gifted and talented stay, and I could leave. I agree. I think it's easier to get a coach as opposed to eliminating a gifted and talented program. And I don't think it would work with just one trying to jockey between two schools. That's that's a challenge.
And you also get the time where the students are with the gifted and talented teacher. That's time that the teacher has, you know, in terms of prep time, or I don't know how they they work in each of the schools. That will be a loss for them, whether it's a once a week or a twice a week kind of a situation.
So I want to I want to be just say two things. I just always want to be mindful that we're talking positions, not people. It does impact people unless the position is open, as some are. That's one thing as we go through this. And then this is the second thing that I think, you know, needs to be said, and I know all of you know this, but I'm gonna say it again anyway, is that so we've been working to put that academic coaching group together for many years. So I think it will be challenging, you know. We're going to be, potentially, we're looking at eleven positions in two years. And so where you start building back, if we continue to average two percent.
You're right, because you're we have to look at the five from last year as well, to your point, you know, certainly the assistant principal and high school and all the positions.
And the coach.
Right, and the coach last year.
Going forward, that's when the discussions start early, next year, with town council, whoever, to start it. We got to bridges. We have to figure out a plan that everybody agrees to to bring these positions back, not all in one year, but to gradually.
We won't get back.
No, we're not going to get out. We have to start the conversation.
We may get some, but you and I have been on here a long time. We know how long.
I know.
And and I'm not saying that F T's are everything either, and I understand the cost and long-term cost of positions within this town, but we're going in the wrong direction.
Yeah, we are. And that's why I think through our, we need to have the communication with everybody else to discuss the impact.
You don't you don't necessarily have to vote on a direction. We I can make a recommendation to all of you, put it in memo form, and if that's the right direction. I don't think that it's a school committee vote to read, unless you're reducing a program completely.
Yeah, no, I think it's the F T's would be the important part. So, you know, we've identified five so far that I think, you know, are understandable and pretty you I think you're comfortable with. So I would say that sixth position. I mean, if we want to take if you want to take more time on it, we could. However, I don't want I don't want you to feel the ramifications of it necessarily either, because this is certainly not your doing.
Right, but it's it's my my responsibility to talk.
And I appreciate that, too. All right. Well, so then if we just charge you with the six positions and we've kind of identified five of them, and then that sixth one will leave up, and certainly.
And we'll continue to discuss it with principals and report back to all of you.
And then, you know, certainly we can talk as a leadership group throughout for the committee, too. So, okay.
And I know it's it's I'm sorry, I know it's easy, like, if you have a retirement to say, you know, that a program's not going to you know, because it's easier if someone's retiring. But, you know, I hate to see, you know, even though it's not an elimination program, it's a big chunk of the program.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, none of these are taken lightly.
I know.
You know, and as we looked at different spots that may open up, we're still looking at what is the impact of not filling that spot? And sadly, you know, you're always working from a deficit. So how are we impacting fewer people and fewer programs if this spot is not filled versus this spot? I mean, it's not a it's not a good strategy.
Well, there's no easy way out of this.
And I think just to be clear, like, when we talk about a coach, while a coach might not directly work with students in the same ways that an academic teacher, a classroom teacher, might work with them. They they certainly pull small groups and they do that kind of work, but it's it's different than a classroom teacher. But the impact a high-quality coach can have on instruction across a building is tremendous, because now that one individual, their job is to essentially train up every single educator in that building to meet the expectations set forth by the administration, to meet the expectations set forth by the district goals and the latest research, because we're striving to do what's best for kids. So while that position might not seem to have an impact on kids, the impact it has on the educators has a direct impact on children. So, again, like these, those two spots, neither one has an intended outcome we want for children. But I I don't see a way out of it without trying to look at one of those, because, to Greg's point, with those bubble teachers and the and the second grade, like, we can't then also create class sizes that are that are growing by like upwards of fifteen percent.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yes. And then in addition to that, thinking about elimination of paraprofessionals. So now we're taking bodies out of classrooms that could have been offering additional supports if class size go to that point, which we've already started to see that trend. We've already brought that data off. It's trending that kids are coming back.
Okay, so to bring this back to a close, I guess, in order to realize the four hundred and four thousand dollar reduction in the double services budget request made by the town council, we'll charge a superintendent with reducing positions by six. We've already identified five that will probably meet the bill, and then the sixth, we will have further discussion with the leadership team and others, and we'll act accordingly. Okay, do you have any more slides?
I know.
So we'll get there. We will. We will get through this, and we are one town, and we work together. We will. We will. We'll move forward. Okay, thank you all for that discussion. Certainly worked well and productive. Hey, moving on, we have some new business. The discussion of the school committee reorganization meeting, which typically happens on July first, as you all know. Today's June seventh. Tomorrow, there is an election, town-wide election, June eighth. Polls are open seven to eight P M., I believe, seven A M. to eight P M., Virchun Park Middle School. Typically, after that, any new members or any elected members join the committee on the first of July. And we typically have our reorganization meeting, and that's usually the only order of business on for that meeting, although there have been exceptions in the past. So wondering, folks. I just want to say it's happening.
Yeah, not bad.
So wondering on folks' availability, should be relatively quick meeting to reorganize. We would elect a new chair and a new vice chair. And what are folks thinking for that?
I had a whole day earlier about it.
On my first Thursday, I think, in the past, we met like that last in the morning. And it's usually fifteen, twenty minutes, or whatever it is. Right. So are folks all available in the morning?
Could it be in the afternoon?
There's always one.
I'm sorry.
What time? What's the earlier?
Two thirty. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I'm I'm fine on that day.
Thursday or first.
I mean, just stretching out the parade.
Yeah. There's a building committee meeting that night, just so we all know, five o'clock. No, no, I'm in Julie. Never mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
What?
I have the, yeah. Two thirty, Sarah, any thoughts on two thirty on the first?
Yeah.
Yeah. Two thirty works. Bill, you're good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
How are you? Are you? Yeah, are you free two thirty on the first?
I can just, I I.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Don. Yeah.
So we're going to just do it just like this?
Yes, yeah. It'll be quick.
Do we actually bug them or not? I guess we do.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do.
It's always.
What?
Bug poor.
We we can come hang out in your studio if you want.
Yeah, we can.
We do that. Is that easier? It's a ten-minute meeting.
Same difference.
Okay.
I mean.
Let us know, and we'll.
I have to move this stuff or I have to move furniture, so.
Yeah, what's easier?
I guess I have to see on, no. Well, we got to, so I have to send Kathy a Zoom, right?
Yeah, yes.
So, and then it'll be posted for you.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so two thirty on the first. That sounds good. Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
And Pam, I didn't ask, because you don't necessarily have to come. Certainly, you can come. It'll be our only order. And Kathy, you'll be here, two thirty, right?
We're always here, right, Kathy? Two thirty.
Here, two thirty. Okay, thank you all. I appreciate that discussion as well, and we look forward to that. I'm certainly. Okay, we have seven point two national night out request for the use of the Summit of High School grounds on August third, twenty twenty-one from five until eight P M. I believe there is a letter.
Mr. Mackey wrote the letter. This is getting back to some of our more traditional summertime activities. The police department and the fire department and L C A S sponsor this national night out.
Okay.
All right, I move to allow a national night out event on August third, twenty twenty-one, from five to eight at the Yelling Jessa Church Field and Stadium parking lot, all works.
Excellent, thank you. The motion has been made by that.
Second?
Second by Sarah, discussion.
The Seafeld event, I heard, went very, very well. Yeah, cock is the pop.
Good.
Yes, yep.
I heard it was very well presented.
Because we didn't have to use the rain date for graduation.
You're right.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We have a contract that we have discussed in executive session regarding the E L P A for a new three-year contract that everyone has reviewed, and we have discussed. And I would ask you to motion, please.
I move to approve the new contract for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four school years for E L P S, E L E A negotiations, right?
Excellent. Thank you. The motion made by Intell, seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Very excited to move forward.
Yes, and just sending my appreciation to the negotiating team, both here, Mr. Blair, Mr. Smith, Intell, and myself, but also the E L E A representatives. Always a lively discussion, but certainly cordial and working well together, which which was good.
Mrs. Brown is a nice addition to that.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Brown, as well. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you. Okay, and our final note, we have our calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year with the parent conference days and P D days.
So this actually came out of the negotiations. Because in that contract, you know that there'll be some changes to the calendar in year two, where we pick up a staff work day. But in year one, in this draft here, we still agreed to reduce two of the half-professional development days. Most years, we had four. So in this draft calendar, we have two. The other half-days are generally centered around parent conferences. And there are half-days, obviously, that lead into, say, Thanksgiving recess, the the holiday break and so forth. So this is an attempt to capture all of that and hopefully not necessarily impact traveling teachers, shared teachers, and so forth, as we have these different days.
Discussion from the committee. On half-days and such.
Yes. The two half-days, one in February and one in March for the parent conferences, could we move those to Wednesdays so that our kindergarteners aren't missing school? Yeah.
So February now, we have February eighth, which is a Tuesday is a half-day, and we have March tenth, which is a Thursday half-day. You're you're asking if we can do both on Wednesday, the ninth in February, and Wednesday, the ninth in March.
Correct.
Okay, so these will be pre-K. Well, the February one is a pre-K five parent conference, so it's going to cover all grades. And then the March one is just pre-K to two. But I think the point that you were stating is that on that on Wednesdays, our preschool does not meet, and so maybe that's a better use of that.
Yeah, so our kids are in school more.
That any issues, Gordon?
I, you know, I don't. I don't see any issues. Generally, we try to rotate days because of shared teachers. This is predominantly, well, at least March is is all Meadowbrook, where February does pick up the other two elementary schools. So you are hitting two Wednesdays. But unfortunately, I know that we've done, whether it be Wednesday or another day, we've we've been heavy on other days before.
Yeah.
And so Wednesday may make some good sense in terms of our preschool. It's not in session on Wednesday, and so half-day, they're already going to be out.
Right. So we have one scheduled for October twenty-seventh. That's a Wednesday. The twenty-fourth of November is a Wednesday as well.
So it'll be more of the specials would be.
Yeah, but the twenty-fourth of November is the day before Thanksgiving.
I mean, you could, you could change the. So the twenty-first is a half-day that is a half-day for professional development. We, you're talking about that one?
Which one's the other?
I'm sorry, you're talking about twenty-seventh.
Yeah, the parent conference.
Just that other Wednesday.
Yeah.
But that's only two that is.
So your parent conference is basically would be done on Wednesdays, is what we're saying.
Right.
Yeah.
There's two on Wednesday, three to five, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I hadn't got it, so thank you.
Is that problematic?
I mean, it does. Shared teachers, you know, that's Wednesdays, they wouldn't see those, but on the other side, in terms of we're fortunately talking about what's going to benefit more students, you you know, you're not forcing parents of preschool to have two half-days in a given week where they're showing they might not report.
You might have a teacher who has two specials. Occasionally, you'll get a teacher who'll get two specials in one day.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't happen. And if their two specials are on
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays, they're going to have to figure out how to equal that out in terms of their planning time.
Right.
Because to miss three Wednesdays, if you've got that extra forty-five minutes, that's.
They have they have the same specials all year.
It depends on how they do it. It depends on the score and how it's set up and.
What about commensary services for same-day, because that can be an issue if we have three Wednesdays?
Well, Wednesday, actually, you're you're, if you're thinking preschool, they're not reporting anyway. So you're not impacting district-wide. Yeah, you're going to have some services you miss, so we'd have to look at that.
So maybe would we just move one of them? Maybe move either the March or February?
But just to finish that point, no matter where you place the half-day, we're going to have to look at services anyway.
Yeah. She's not the same student, so.
You're right. I mean, then you're you're more operating on the point that Mrs. Marjorie Boucher's making, which is the fact that if you have a special teacher, specialist teacher, who, you know, has certain groups on Wednesday, they miss out on those groups through Wednesdays.
So they have the same specials all year.
They're scheduled, once, yeah, once they finish the schedule, they're operating on that same special schedule year.
So you want to move one of them, maybe? Would that be enough, or is it or does it outweigh to move the two based on any other issues we just discussed?
I mean, because it would only be the afternoon that they're missing.
Yeah.
Right. I think your March one, moving it from the tenth to the ninth, this is fine, all right, because that you're you're dealing just with Meadowbrook School.
Yep.
The October and the February, you know, there's arguments, I guess, on both sides of whether you move both.
What do you think, Intell? You brought the issue up on the, so the question would be the February one. The October's already Wednesday. If we move March to Wednesday, the one in question, that would be February. the one in question, that would be February?
So the, I guess the advantage is a special teacher who sees certain groups on Wednesday will certainly in February see that group. The disadvantage is for your preschool parents, they now are going to have two half days where preschool doesn't meet. Or two days where preschool doesn't meet, right? Wednesday wouldn't be a half day.
Do we, should we move the two still? I think either way, it's going to have an impact, so it's, it just kind of.
To Gordon's point, somebody's going to get impacted somewhere, it's just what is the least path of resistance I have.
What do you suggest, Gordon?
I mean, I think you can look at the parent conferences to be on Wednesdays, and I think one of the things that we, not even I think, I know, one of the things that we have to look at this summer is when we miss services, how do we anticipate that once a calendar's in place, be more proactive in making them up and scheduling it so that we're not trying to do it as compensatory services, we're trying to be proactive and say, hey, I know that on this Wednesday, we're not going to be able to meet to, you know, go through our normal routine, so I'm going to schedule it on this day or that day. That's something that district-wide, we have to start.
Maybe flipping the schedule, too. You had your morning classes this day, the next half day, you do your afternoon classes.
Yeah.
Just practice.
So I mean, it's.
Are they heavy in in terms of Meadowbrook, though, because if they don't have the pre-K coming, are they pulling those once a week OT, the once a week speech kids out and that are in first and second grade and kindergarten, and putting them in on that Wednesday? You know what I mean? Because that.
In terms of they've missed, generally, yes, there's, there's some makeup possible on Wednesday. Generally, it's more geared towards IEP meetings and planning that maybe throughout the week, they have not received the same planning time, depending on their schedules.
So should we try it then, we'll move all, we'll move the two Wednesdays and we'll see how this year goes, and if they want, if there isn't a chance to flip, and maybe they look at that, if not, then they make up the services. Okay, so Antonella, if you want to move to accept the draft as presented with the changes to both February and March, I would appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the draft with the changes of the half day pre-K through 5 parent conferences on February 8th, moving it to February 9th, and then the half day on March 10th be moved to March 9th.
2021, 2022.
2021, 2022 calendar.
Excellent, thank you. Motion has been made by Antonella. Nobody wants to leave tonight, huh? I'm holding on to that. Bill, second. I saw his handle. Motion made by Antonella, seconded by Bill, any other discussion?
I just, I don't, don't understand how we, I appreciate the effort that we've gone from 10 to 8. I just, in terms of half days, I just think we have to continue to do better. I understand professional development needs, but we just spent how many minutes talking about what is going to be lost by the inclusion of half days? And that's not to discredit parent conferences and the need for them, not to discredit professional development. I believe in that, I wholeheartedly believe in that. However, it has an impact. Eight half days equates to four lost instructional days, that we are essentially rubber stamping. And I I just, I can't continue to come back and say yes, it's just, it does not sit well with me, I don't think it's instructionally sound, and it still puts us very close to the minimum instructional limits that we have to charge.
I was wondering is, and this would be for like a future year, now, I know that our teachers have, is it one day that they stay in, or is there's a, there's certain?
The secondary level day of one day a week that they stay late.
But the elementary doesn't?
Elementary doesn't necessarily have it stipulated that way, our elementary teachers do stay late.
I mean, I know they do just because they do.
Right.
But no, I didn't know, like, maybe moving forward, of course, there's, but like, if if we use one of those days, I mean, a long day, you know what I mean, like, like, so that they can get some in at 3 o'clock for a parent that maybe can't go early, or like, so make it a, one of those half days, just make it a, you know, or extended.
Full day to extend.
Yeah, yeah, or something like that, how do we work that in with, like, actually, if they're going to stay later anyways? I know sometimes there's.
It would have to be.
Staff meetings and stuff.
They have extended days, though, don't they, like, for faculty meetings and things like that? Because we could even be looking at that for parent conferences, too.
So you take away a faculty meeting and put a.
Yeah.
It's only an hour.
I mean, I don't know.
It's for conferences, though, you know, I don't know how long they do the conference, just to think about it, you know?
And prioritize the kids that you need to conference with, too, first. I mean, there are already, some of them, they're already meeting them in March.
I think our elementary teachers actually do, on their own time, meet with a lot of parents when they're very concerned about a particular child before March. But it's a good point, it's a, it's an excellent point that March is a little late if you have someone that you have concerns about in terms of how they're making progress or not making progress.
But we did add in the new contract that we approved today, a full professional development day, we did reduce half days by two, so we are making progress, but continue to talk about it and make more progress as we go. Any other discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, it has been seconded, all of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carries forward this one. Be up in a couple days, the calendar on the website.
Sure, we'll make the changes and then we'll put it up and take the draft off of it.
Okay, I think that's it, yeah. If there's no other business after hours and 11 minutes in this chair, I would entertain a motion to adjourn basically. So motion has been made by Bill, seconded by Beth, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you, and good night.